I was taken back here a couple of weeks ago when the American Legion showed up with the humanitarian award from the chapel of the four chaplains. And if I fail to, I want to mention that the council and the administration, really, it's a collective effort here. What we do, working with the county, working with the state, working with Main Street, working with the chamber, this is not an award that I should have been directed to me, but for the collaborative efforts that we're doing. And I just wanted to make that clear. I just celebrated my 41st anniversary with the city, and it's been my honor and continues to be my honor and privilege to serve. And before I get started, I just wanted to mention Miles and Jared for their assistance in putting together the videos for the presentation. So we took the tagline from the city mission statement, which is preserving the past and forging the future. And as you can see there, Miles did a great job of documenting the historic downtown, probably some video that had never been taken before, to show the city's respect for and continuing to preserve the past and the square and the buildings around it, because that's important to us. And then we'll move into, with some of these next videos, forging the future as well. So in my last term, the staff and I made a determined effort to tackle some of the harder projects that had been pending for decades. Before I get to that, 2023 was a very busy year for the city, which included 22 ribbon cuttings, 1,341 new full-time jobs, and 122 part-time jobs, all created in that one year. The State Route 18 improvements were completed in 2023 and 2024. That's a $43 million project, a portion of which is in the city. And the West Smith Road project, for that same period of time, 2023 to 2024, from Court Street to close to State Road there at Standard Welding, was a $6 million project, and a third of that was federal grant dollars. We were awarded by the state of Ohio through Representative Ray the Uptown Trail Loop to extend the trail from the Spokes Cafe up just a little bit north of the square along Broadway Street. And as I mentioned, all of the things we do are collaboratively with Main Street, the chamber, and the local government officials. And in my mind, it's really the, it's really all of our departments working together on each and every project, and you're going to hear some examples of that that provide the excellent customer service. So the first one that we heard about over and over and over again at North Court Street was the old Kmart location. And with the old Kmart building, we had repeated property code violations, the utilities had all been shut off, the entire building was filled with mold, and what was resulting is vagrants and vandals breaking windows and trying to gain access to the building. And even though we met and tried to work with Benderson up in New York, they weren't doing much at all to alleviate these issues, and we subsequently cited the four principals of Benderson into Medina Municipal Court. Fortunately for us, when they got to Medina Municipal Court, Judge Warner warned them that they could have been cited for each and every one of those days of the violations, which was over about a 14 or 15-month period. And he directed them either demo the building and restore the property, lease it, or sell it. Myers, by the way, had been interested for years in the building, but couldn't get a response back from Benderson. And low and behold, after that court case, the negotiations began, and Myers was able to secure a contract to build their facility here. Kimberly then worked with the Ohio Department of Development to get them a $500,000 grant for the demolition of the prior Kmart. When the Meyer head of real estate attended a two-hour pre-development meeting with us, when we do those, all of the department heads are there, county officials are there, sanitary, all the utilities. And he had never seen anything quite like that before, but he also told me that, he said, usually, I'm lucky if somebody introduces me to the mayor, or the mayor stops and says hi to me, but to have you spend two hours in a meeting to go over the intricate details of what this store is going to need to make it successful. And as I walked him out to his car there to head back to the airport, I told him, this has been one of the biggest concerns that we've had as a city, and we're just so thankful that they're coming to Medina, and we'll do everything in our power to make this successful. By the way, the Myers project is a $20 million investment in and of itself, and will be a total square footage of $158,000. The next project that had been pending for over a decade was the Acme property down at 1225 South Court, or High Point, and South Court Street. So Kimberly and I began engaging them pretty regularly, trying to get this project moving. I attended the boards and commissions, as well as the council meeting, to support the project, and also to support the requested changes to the special planning district, because when it was first passed, a lot of things had changed, and some minor changes had to be worked through the council. And the council was very cooperative with that. One of the things that they asked us for, not knowing how it was going to be to deal with ODOT on State Route 3, was for three driveways, one for an exit for their delivery truck, one for a pharmacy entrance, and then the main entrance, which is closer to Route 3. And that would access all of the out parcels along 3, the Acme itself, as well as the future north wing that they're going to build there. So when they approached ODOT about having a full-service driveway there, ODOT refused. And one of their arguments was, well, you have three driveways on High Point, so you really don't need it on the State Route. Well, the Acme folks felt it was critical that they have access from the State Route. It didn't necessarily have to be a full-service access, which, by the way, if you look directly across the street, there's a car repair place and a McDonald's there that has a full-service access. But yet, a business like this, making this type of investment, putting a wing on with several more businesses, and businesses along Court Street that would all use that one same driveway, they just couldn't see it. So I reached out, well, first Kimberly talked to the decision-makers at Acme, because I didn't want to create a situation where I was putting them in a rough time if they go somewhere else and have to deal with ODOT. They were okay with me using, working with the state legislators. We had a lunch meeting over it, and we wanted to have a meeting with the ODOT district director and tell him why this was so important to the city. So what I laid out for him was, first of all, this district has more appeals of their decisions than any other district in the state of Ohio, which is telling in and of itself. The fact that all of the safety forces, with the exception of Montville, that are going to respond for mutual aid, including police and fire, are going to come from the north and have to bypass the property and then come into the traffic on High Point to access it. So from public safety to access to Acme telling us this project may not happen if we don't at least have a right turn in and right turn out. And that's what we modified our plea to, that the project may not happen at all. So I ended that meeting with the ODOT folks with a warning, and told them that I've had the governor's cell phone number for as long as he's been the governor of the state of Ohio. I don't want to call the governor on this, but I'm telling you, I feel this strongly that you need to revisit this, make it right turn in and right turn out, or my next call is going to be to the governor and ask him what he thinks about this. Because, by the way, the governor's administration and the state legislators, both houses, are very much favorable to development, not anti-development. So he told me, he said, we're going to need a little bit of time. And we met the Thursday before the eclipse. And I said, well, I'm okay, but I need to know how long. We talking a week? We talking two weeks? Because I don't want this thing to go another three, four months again, which were some of these other delays while they were having them doing traffic studies and whatnot. He said, well, tomorrow's Friday. I said, yes, sir, I'm aware of that. The next day's the, Monday's the eclipse. I said, yeah, I've heard about that, too. And so he said, how about by the end of next week? We can get your answer by the end of next week. I said, that's fine. If you can do it within a week, six days, that's fine. So I was here for the eclipse. The council may remember, we moved the council meeting to Tuesday, and I had promised my wife we would go to Florida. So early that morning, we got up about 3:00 a.m., and I was driving to Florida, this is now Wednesday morning, and I get a text from Sharon Ray, saying she just got the letter from ODOT, saying they approved the right turn in and the right turn out only. And it was both shocking and sad to me that it had to come to that extreme, to try to get them to just do their jobs and approve what I thought was a pretty simple request. So the Acme market is a $13 million investment, 56,000 square feet. And as I said, there's going to be additional stores to the north of there shortly. The next major project is, as the council is well aware, is the 1969 courthouse lease. The current municipal court was built in 1982 and is comprised of 13,500 square feet in space. It does not meet the current Ohio Supreme Court standards, and those standards, for anybody that are not familiar, are you're required in a courthouse to have total separation of public versus court employees versus in custody prisoners. The hallways at our courthouse next door are shared by all three of those parties currently. So the city, as the council is well aware, looked at a variety of options over the years to build a second floor on the existing courthouse, to do an addition to the south into the parking lot now that we had the parking deck. Another option was to remodel the former Masonic Temple. And another option was to partner with Medina County for the brand-new courthouse they were building, because there were efficiencies in doing these things together, and we could have had a floor on that courthouse for $8 million. We had a ballot initiative that was passed, requiring us to go to the voters. The county did not want to wait for us, so they just took our floor off and created a courthouse with one less floor. So our only other option to maintain those same efficiencies were to negotiate a lease for the 1969, which was now vacated because of them moving into the new courthouse. And that's about 28,222 square feet, so a little more than double the size of where we are today next door. It's a 33-year lease with potential extensions of two 10-year terms. It will keep and preserve the current look of the east side of the square, which is what we heard very strongly from the public that they wanted. It'll still permit us to use the security checkpoint and holding areas. And when you think about that from a taxpayer standpoint, the county has four courts, and we have one. So now, the cost of that security checkpoint, the county's paying 80%, and we're paying 20% once we move in. And the holding area, the same thing, the staff in that secure holding area, the county's paying 80%, we're paying 20%. So rather than duplicating that block, block and a half from each other, we're actually saving taxpayer dollars both in the city and in the county as a result of this project. An amendment to the lawsuit was then filed, trying to block us from doing any renovations or spending money inside the court, other than just moving into a court that doesn't meet the Supreme Court standards any more than our one next door does. And then the last major project is the Legacy Hotel and Convention Center. And this is going to be a real game changer for the future of Medina, and I'll share why I believe that in just a second. So those of you that may not be oriented with where that's going to be, it's just north of the parking lot, outside of Time Two Restaurant, the city parking lot there, or across from Castle Noel. The hotel will face South Court Street, the convention center will face towards Elmwood. The buildings demolished for this project were not historic in nature. The project is a 51,000-square-foot hotel with four floors, 77 rooms, and includes three upscale restaurants. The convention center alone is 6,000 square feet, and the total project's about a $21.5 million investment. So why do I call this a game changer? Every year in the city, we have 300 or 350 either weddings or photos per year up on the square. Right now, they come for the photos or the ceremony, and they leave. There's nowhere to stay here. If we could have them here for that two or three days, that would benefit all of the businesses on the square, it would benefit the hotel, and it would also give them a chance to see some of the other amenities in town. Discount Drug Mart and Sandrich Crafted Foods headquarters are in Medina, and both of them bring many visitors that would love to stay in our Medina Towne Town. In fact, they drive by it every time on their way to the facilities, but there's nowhere for them to stay here of this nature. So they end up either in Montrose, or Strongsville, or sometimes even up closer to Hopkins Airport. Another interesting fact is we have several of our industries that are owned out of our country. So All Fasteners on Lake Road, their owners are in Australia. Agrati LLC, their owner, it's on Lake Road as well, their owners are in Italy. Ravago Americas owners, and that's the corner of West Smith and Commerce, are in Belgium. So they routinely have folks traveling from these countries to their facility to check on things, and again, we can't keep them here in the city. And then in addition to those things, we have many large annual events, like the ICE Festival, like the Candlelight Walk, Art in the Park, the Medina Fest. And this hotel will permit visitors to stay for more than one day, and see not only the event they came for, but also travel to Castle Noel, Root Candle, Foundry Social, as well as visit numerous shops, retailers, and restaurants in our historic district in downtown. So all four of these projects are collaborations between the city departments and county and state officials. Police and Fire is a collaboration that we've worked very hard on, and some examples of that are when the fire truck rolls up, the police are generally there already, so they'll start unrolling the hoses. If ladders need to be propped up to the upper floors, they can help with that. The PD has helped previously with drones to identify hotspots, to then direct the chief or the commanding officers as to what they're seeing for the attack of the fire. And in my mind, what this is taking is police staff and fire staff, and using them all together effectively and efficiently. That's not done in most cities. That's a collaborative approach that we do here, just because we're used to working together with one another, and I can tell you that we're saving tax dollars by doing that. Right now, our fire staffing is 16 hours a day, seven days a week. The chief and I have been discussing this, and I know the council heard it at the budget time. We're trying to raise our staffing numbers up. In fact, I'm swearing in four new firefighters next week. And we're going to do a trial starting in the first quarter of 2025 of 24/7 staffing. And we're going to evaluate it after a trial period to see if the staffing numbers will sustain it, and will the budget sustain it as well. So more on that, but that's what the plans are for. In addition, Representative Ray attained a $1 million grant for the Medina County Career Center to build a brand-new three-story live-fire training building. The Career Center also got two smaller grants. And interestingly enough, Representative Bill Batchelder, when he was in office and the Career Center was first built, he actually got state funding to build the original fire tower that was there. So it's kind of a repeat of the past, although the numbers are significantly higher. And I also just wanted to mention that the Career Center is celebrating their 50 years here in our community. We have a new police K-9 at the Medina High School with our school resource officer. This K-9's trained on firearms and explosive detection, as well as to be a support animal for the students. This is a collaborative grant with Medina High School, and the city is seeking funding from a foundation to pay for that K-9 vehicle, to reimburse the city, because what finance passed with the five cars, one of those is for the K-9. So if we get this grant, then we can reimburse the city. The cemetery is next. We built the third columbarium wall, and also are adding new roads to access more of the lot spaces that weren't able to be accessed without the new roads. The Spring Grove Cemetery is the only site in Medina County designated by the National Park Service as making a significant contribution to the Underground Railroad and meeting the requirements for inclusion in the National Underground Railroad Network to Freedom. And just this past May, May 10th of this year, signs were erected to recognize the grave sites of H.G. and Elizabeth Blake, as well as Lieutenant Colonel Herman and Martha Canfield for their roles in Medina in that Underground Railroad network. The city has a great collaborative relationship with the Friends of the Cemetery, and we thank them for their continued support. The Healthy Medina initiatives, we were able to obtain foundation and grant funding to renovate and install new lighting and equipment in the City Hall workout room for a price of about $60,000. And I can tell you, the staff are very, very much appreciative of that, and it's getting very well-used. We did an 1,800-square-foot expansion at the rec. center workout area, actually extended it out towards the parking lot. And again, that was through a capital grant from the state of Ohio that Sharon Ray, Representative Sharon Ray, helped us with. Our healthcare, we have seen reduced premiums over the years, and recently, we had a reduced premium for 2024, and it was a two-year contract with a zero increase in 2025. We were trying to drive the renewal number even lower, and instead, what Medical Mutual offered is if we take a look at your claims history versus your premium payments, and it's within a certain percentage, you can get 1%, 2%, up to a 5% rebate in 2024 on the claims from 2023. And I'm happy to share that the city accomplished that. We got the full 5% rebate, which is roughly $150,000 in savings. We worked with Medina City Schools again to remove two tennis courts that were in need of repair, and replaced them with six brand-new pickleball courts down at AI Root Middle School. And I can tell you, because I live close there, the courts are being well-used. I can hear them from morning to evening, and it also provides an opportunity for the schoolchildren to learn the pickleball, and it's been very well-received in the city. The Skateboard Park renovation was recently completed with ARPA funds, and the new playground equipment at Roscoe Ewing Park, due to Murray and Sue Van Up helping us financially support that. Communications and Medina TV. Barbara DeZer is our marketing director, so she searches out grant opportunities, as well as marketing in city magazines, Instagram, and Facebook. Medina TV is creating new ways to become more transparent. So the ADA requirements are coming out, where city websites have to be available for people that are sight-impaired, hearing-impaired, suffer from colorblindness. So we're redoing the entire city website to meet those ADA requirements ahead of time. And the Medina TV crew are also looking at new apps, because we know some folks are moving away from the standardized cable or fiber. So some of those apps are Facebook, YouTube, Instagram, Roku, Apple TV, Android, Apple iOS, Firestick TV, and live streaming video on demand. So currently, Medina TV has over 86,000 views, and with these new apps added, we're looking to expand that further and further with these options. So this is something that touches my heart. I was approached by the Medina County Board of Developmental Disabilities, and they wanted us to look at a place where we could have a changing table for an adult in a wheelchair. And Nino and I looked at the public restrooms, but the space just wasn't there. We looked at these current restrooms here at City Hall, because as you can imagine, it takes quite a space to host this. And reluctantly, we told them that at least currently, we can't find a good spot for it. But what they did then is got a grant, and were able to purchase this mobile unit to provide these same services. But they said, you know, we don't know how to get that word out. So I told them, we'll send it to Main Street, we'll send it to the ICE Festival folks, we'll send it to the community band, everybody that uses that square. Because as I look at things like this, people that can't come to our square and take part in the events because of their disability and us not having something like this just isn't fair and just isn't right. So by having this opportunity now, this permits them to come to the events at our square, just like everybody else can, and enjoy it. And I'm further happy to share with the council that in the renovations of the 1969 courthouse, Judge Warner and Cindy have made a commitment to put another stationary one there on the lower level of the 1969 courthouse, which will serve not only the Medina Municipal Court, but because of the common entry, the other four common pleas courts as well. That's something great for the city and something that we can be proud of, and it's something we should do for those that have these life challenges. Just a few other things. On November 3rd of 2023, our chief building official, Dan Gladish, and Nancy Nozick from Branstad or Carroll, were asked to do a presentation on the practical use of math and measurements to speak to the students at Medina City Schools. And what we thought was the courthouse where the children walk by routinely, the brand-new courthouse, walk by routinely, going to the library, going to Cups Cafe, going to their schools, would be a great example of that. And I thank Dan and Nancy for doing that. We have numerous events on the square, as the council is well aware. What you may not be aware is what happens then after those events. The next day, the park staff come in and blow any of the debris that was left behind out to the curbs. the, the curbs and the street. And then the street department works with them to run the sweeper early in the morning before all, all the cars start to arrive to park. Reverend Mike Wilson from Fellowship Baptist Church spoke with Representative Ray about needing a van so he could, he could improve his programs at the Fellowship Baptist Church. And at the time, the state didn't have one, but several months later, Sharon, Sharon was alerted that there was one available for them and, and she, she got that for them and it's, it's really helped with the programming at, at Fellowship. And then the, the next thing is the solar eclipse. As I, as I mentioned earlier, that was April 8th, 2024 in Medina. And Main Street has some sort of technology where they can measure through people's technology devices, the number of people that came for the events over that Friday through Monday span. And it was in excess of 4,400 people that came to the city of Medina for those events. Our finance department, the city has one of the lowest income tax rates in the state at, at 1.25% with a partial credit. And, and I know the council is, as it, as I am and the department heads are, are proud of how we operate the city on, on that lower income tax. When I was first elected mayor, the income tax rate, or the income tax in total generated about 12 million a year. And during the campaign, I committed to doing my best to increase the income tax without doing it on the backs of the residents. And I'm pleased to present that today, our, our latest year is 2023, obviously, when we have a full year of income tax, but the income tax generated was in excess of $20 million in the, in that span of time. So that's 2010 to 2023, which then creates increased revenue for, for our city operations because just like people at home, the cost of everything for us is going up as well. And, and there's no doubt that the, this is resulting from numerous job creations and industrial and commercial expansions. So that's Princess Madison. She's going to be nine this December and her little brother Aiden will be five. And I'm just so thankful that they live here in a community where we can see them and do things with them and go to their sports activities. So in, in closing, I, I just want to conclude by thanking all of you for your support and investment in the, in the community. This is my 15th state of the city to you. Each year, I'm further impressed and proud of how you all support, help and promote the city, our staff and our fine community. And I, I just ask that God bless you and your families in the great city of Medina. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer, answer them.
Thank you, Mayor. As always, that was, that was a great presentation. Does anybody have any questions for the mayor or any comments on the council? I'm hearing none. I think that was a, a great one. Now we're, we'll recess a little bit here until council begins at 7:30.